Saint Paul Mission and Baptist Church located here in Camden.
And we pray, our Father in heaven, we come this evening, first of all, we just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Lord.
Thank you for this day that you have made, let us pretend to rejoice and be glad in it. We're praying, Hymen the Father, for this meeting tonight, that it will go in the way that you would have it to go. Pray, Hymen the Father, for the citizens of this city, also citizens of our county. Hymen the Father, ask that you, if anybody that have anything, that would keep them from making a decision tonight, ask that you would clear their hearts and their minds, that they might make the right decision. We pray, Hymen the Father, for the mayor, for the alderman and all who have helped make decisions in this decision-making. We pray, Hymen the Father, that we are the citizens of Camden, and also the county, will obey the law, but the rules of the revelation, what is said before of. For we have so much to thank you, Father, that we just stopped by tonight to say thank you, Lord. Pray, Hymen the Father, that the city and the county will come together and unite together, and that there's one body in Christ, and that we work together in love, one another. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
If you please remain standing for our pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the fact of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated at this time, and have my robe called.
Lindsey?
Here.
Dell?
Here.
Askew?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Albert?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Argud?
Here.
Simmons is absent, and Mayor Watt?
Present.
If you've had an opportunity to look over the minutes, let me take a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
All right, well, let's take a vote. Those in favor, is the voting side of the line?
Aye.
I'd say it's a half. If you've had an opportunity to look at the financial report for January. Motion to approve? To move?
A second.
Second?
Discussion?
Discussion.
Mr. Green's not... I was going to ask you one thing here. The economic development fund. It's coded up here, we budgeted for the retail business level. I don't think that's wrong.
It's the, we have multiple accounts with the same number.
Right, okay.
So I'll fix that.
We used to have one on page... And, let's see, there's a spot here, there's an anomaly in here somewhere. Should have had page strange or anything. I'll catch you later.
Any more discussion? Those in favor, is the voting side of the line? Those opposed? Well, I have it again. We open this time now for audience participation, where I say everyone, please observe five minutes. Those will be accounted for by none other than our most able accountant, Mr. Travis. If you please come to the podium, the mic is already on, you don't have to adjust it, just speak loud and clear enough for those who are around to hear, we're picking up for audio purposes only. Please give your name and address before speaking, thank you, sir.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Jesse Sanders, 219 Derrick Park Street, Camden, Arkansas. In the last meeting, I brought up the issue about regulations on the headlights on the vehicle. The other night, one blind man almost hit me outside. No one mentioned anything about it, I talked with the young man, he said about this how he said regulation in Arkansas is 54 inches. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Lawrence Askew. My address is 717 Maple Street here in the great city of Camden. Mister Mayor, the City Council, and to the city of Camden. I'm taking my alderman hat off, and I'm speaking as a taxpayer, as a concerned citizen of this great city. I have an experience on Saturday morning, I went into Max Groceries, and I'm pretty sure, if those that's not aware of the message that's in, that was in last week's sale paper. And I just happened to look down, and I seen it, and I had a talk with the manager. And we had a good conversation, I understood where he stand, and he understand where I stand, but I let him know that this message was offensive to me. This message was racist to me, and I'm appalled by it. And I asked him, how do you, with a clear conscience, people come in and spend their hard-earned money, and you got garbage like this? And that's what it is to me, everybody got a right to their opinion. And again, he said he had no problem with it, full respect to that, but I do. And thank God for options, because Camden is not a Mayberry. Max is not the owner's store in Camden. And if the public got to go and spend their hard-earned money, and put up with messages like this, I'm appalled. I am appalled. And as a council, we encourage our citizens to keep the money right here in town. We do. But I will not encourage anybody to spend money over there, but I'm not spending any money over there. I will encourage them to use their options. And we seen the news, Steve, the news come down. And the same manager that I talked to, he said it come down from corporate, but he said that he stand behind this message. Heaven has walls, a gate, a strict immigration policy, hell has open borders, let that sink in. You know, to me, this is a Trump message, and don't try to mix scripture with your idea or your agenda. For somebody that might not know scripture, you might can sell them on it. But to me, you know, sell your meat, keep your message, if you're going to put anything in the air. But I just want, a lot of people that I talked to, they didn't know about this. This is right in front of our face, and it's a slap in the face. It's a slap in the face. And I just want to make all known that do not know, and I'm encouraging you to exercise your options. And I want to commend our code enforcer, he had a different message, if you read the paper. He talked with the Coonan's Club, and he gave a great presentation on diversity, about working together, coming together. We supposed to be moving forward. Travis sent a message about moving forward as a community, working together. Our merchant, when we taking our hard-earned dollars, they want to take us back, and we trying to move forward. Thank you very much. Is anyone, is there another? Is there another? I got nervous. All right, well, we'll move on now to the mayor's report. We're going to have, first, if you will, Mr. Richardson, will you come and introduce our first report tonight?
Mayor, Council, good afternoon. In last month's council meeting, the mayor may mention that we were working with Senecille Solar on a summer field project that would benefit Camden Water Utilities and the city of Camden, and building a solar field. Recently, Washtau County has got on board with this idea, and we've come together as a joint effort between Camden Water Utilities, City of Camden, and Washtau County, to build even a bigger and better solar field. The proposal that's been presented to us has the potential of saving Camden Water Utilities and the city of Camden over $8 million over the next 30 years, this solar field. And I might add that that's without any out-of-pocket expense. So we're all committed to this solar field. This evening, I've invited Bill Holter with Senecille Solar and his staff here for a, what probably should take two hours, but they're going to cram it down into 15 minutes, so they'll be speaking pretty fast. It is our hope that after you hear their presentation tonight, that you agree that this proposal sounds fair, and that you will give the mayor and myself consent to sign a letter of intent to get this time-sensitive project started. The letter has been approved, this letter of intent has been approved by the Water and Sewer Commission, contingent upon your approval tonight. With this signed letter of intent, we would then have the power to negotiate a contract, which will be brought to you before signing. So at this time, I'll ask Mr. Bill Holter, and get sure that they can afford and give the presentation.
Mayor, members of the city board, it's a great pleasure to be here, Judge McAdoo, members of Court and others, we're delighted to be back in Camden. Some of you may remember that I served previously as Lieutenant Governor of the state. Camden was always very supportive of what we were trying to do, particularly proud of what we got accomplished with the scholarship lottery, and all the thousands of students that are receiving those scholarships now. So it's just, it's terrific to be back in Camden, with what we believe is another opportunity to benefit the community. So David was, was right, that we've got a lot of material to cover in a very short period of time. But I do want certainly the members of the board and the mayor, if you have questions, you know, we're happy to answer them. We're going to talk a little bit about our team, but mostly, we're going to focus on what we've already accomplished in other projects around the state and around the country, and then get to the financial impact for Camden, for the water utilities, and for Washtau County. So who we are, we're the largest Arkansas headquartered solar company. We do not do residential solar, and we do not do a very large-scale utility solar. We focus on what we call the middle market, that's commercial enterprises, that's municipal utilities, governmental entities. So what we work on is exactly what we're proposing here, and we've done around the country. I want to brag a little bit about our team, we have a couple of guys that are really the best in the country when it comes to the regulatory environment around solar. Eddie Moore worked on the Arkansas Public Service Commission staff for eight years. He was one of the primary authors of the net metering statutes, which we are going to operate under. Nobody, I can say this without fear of anybody questioning me on it, nobody knows more about net metering in Arkansas than Eddie Moore, period, full stop. And so he's on the team. Jason Keys is our general counsel, he has opened up solar markets in 30 states across the country. We would put our team of folks up against any, any in the country on the regulatory front. Some projects that we've already completed, we did, for those of you who have been on Interstate 40 between North Little Rock and West Memphis, at the L'Oreal facility, the Maybelline plant, you may have seen the project on the left. It's a bit deceptive with that photo, that's eight acres of solar panels, that's over 3,500 solar modules. Each one is about six by three feet. That power plant produces 2 million kilowatt-hours a year of electricity, which at market prices is about $200,000 a year worth of electricity coming out of that power plant. We're having a little problem there on the right-hand side, that is, should be a picture of an 800,000-square-foot manufacturing facility with 4,000 modules on top of it. That is, we'll get you a picture later, but that's the largest solar power plant in the state of Kentucky. We delivered that one also for L'Oreal. We believe you will be impressed once a project gets rolling, and how quickly it is constructed. The power plant on the left was constructed in 49 days, from construction start to generation of electricity. The power plant that's on that building took two months to get it going. This is, on the left-hand side there, that's 42 acres of solar panels in Clarksville, Arkansas. That is a 6.5-megawatt power plant, produces 11 million kilowatt-hours of electricity. Just to put that in context, that is enough to supply the full electricity consumption of 25% of the residences in Clarksville, Arkansas. That power plant is, Clarksville will tell you that's saving them $500,000 a year in electricity costs. Hey Travis? Okay, so we've been working with the mayor, David, with the judge, and we gathered the bills from the water utility, the city, and the county. And we are working on a power plant design of about 3.4 megawatts. That would be sufficient to produce enough, enough electricity to satisfy the full load, the full electricity consumption of the water utility, of all of the city meters, and all of the Washtau County meters. We would propose initially, this is still under development, we proposed to do it on one comprehensive site, to get some economies of scale, and that each portion of the power plant would be owned by the respective entity. So there'd be a portion of it owned by the city, there'd be another portion of it owned by the water utility, there'd be still another portion owned by Washtau County. So what will we project that that will save? So I'm going to go through this quickly, but here's, we've broken this up into three projects. So this is just for the city of Camden, excluding the water utilities for the moment. So the city of Camden, this coming year, if they, if the electricity consumption in 2019 is identical to what it was in 2018, then the city itself will spend $120,000 and change on electricity. If we build a solar power plant afterward, the city would wind up paying $25,000 a year to your electricity provider, which is Entergy Arkansas. And then there would be a payment made to the power plant owner of $60,000 and change. So your electricity spend for the city would drop from $120,000 a year to $85,000 a year, and you would save, round numbers, $35,000 a year. That savings will grow over the course of the next 30 years, because unlike your electricity bill, which grows every year, you have utility rate increases and so forth, we're going to be locking in the price that you would be paying for electricity over the term. So your savings are actually going to grow year by year, you start out for the city at about $35,000, but over the 30-year period, if utility prices escalate the way they have historically, then over a 30-year period, the city would wind up saving $2.2 million, that's just the city accounts. If we then go to the next slide, we do the same analysis, and I'll, I'll just get to the punchline for the county. The county would save $27,000 in the first year, and would save 1.8 million over the 30-year period. And then finally, the water utilities, which is the biggest consumer of electricity, the pumps and the water treatment and so forth are really the biggest users of electricity in the area. So the water utility in the first year would save about $66,000, and over the course of the 30 years would save 5.4 million. So when you add all this up, it's right at $8 million in total for the three entities over a 30-year period. I would also just say here that these are preliminary numbers. We believe that as we work with the three entities in developing the power plant, that we can improve on these savings. We have done that with our other clients, where we sign a letter of intent, and sign a contract, and then we get to work with the clients, improving the project, reducing the cost, and increasing the savings. And that would be our goal here as well. And then Travis, let's just, just to walk through what the next steps would be. So of course, the governmental entities would need to have their approval, we'd sign a term sheet, we'd enter into negotiations, then come back with a contract that the governmental entities would sign. We would then go and get the approval of the Arkansas Public Service Commission. We've done this on our projects before, we've built arm-in-arm with the community to get those approvals. After that approval, then we're really moving at our own pace. All of the third parties that could provide, you know, delays, or get in the way, or require the approvals, after we have the Public Service Commission approval, we're good to go, and then we can really move. We show you here that we would deliver the power plant six months after the Public Service Commission approval. We've never failed to do that in, well, we've done it every time in less than four months. So we put six in there, because we feel comfortable with that, but we think we'd do it even more quickly. The bottom line is, subject to the approval of this group and the Court, we would, we would get busy, we'd get negotiating, we'd take it to the Public Service Commission, and we would be striving to have this solar power plant in place, generating electricity by the end of this calendar year. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to take any questions anybody's got.
Does anyone have any questions or observations at this time?
I have one.
Yes.
Sounds good. When will the breakdown come to the cost of each one of the governmental entities, breakdown of their investment?
Yeah, so, it's a great question. So the reality is, we are not asking for an investment from any of the governmental entities. Senecille Solar is going to provide all the capital for the power plant. The only thing the governmental entities are going to provide is the land on which the project will be built.
Okay, that was my next question. Where's the land coming, who's going to purchase it, how is it going to be purchased? So the governmental entities will be the investors on the land purchase?
That's right. In fact, we identified some land that the county already owns.
Okay, you all have identified?
Well, with the county.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I'm curious, sir. Who does the billing and the meter reading and all that stuff? I mean, how does this, is energy, they're not collecting the electric, the bills, who's sending the bills?
Sure.
And who's going to maintain the grid? I guess y'all are just going to hook it up to the lines, and I'm wondering if the Public Service Commission is going to come back at some point and refigure that.
Sure, okay, so let's take both the questions in order. So on the, on the billing, you still will have meters with Entergy Arkansas at all of your locations, none of that will change. All of those locations will still be tied to the grid, and will still be getting electricity from the grid. The solar power plant is hooked in typically to a distribution line on the Entergy Arkansas system. The metering off of the solar power plant is, is basically done with a revenue-grade meter that the governmental entities and Senecille Solar select together and agree upon. Entergy's still going to send you a monthly bill, it's just going to be a much, much lower monthly bill. So they're going to bill you, but you'll have a lower bill from them. And then once a month, you would get a bill from Senecille Solar for the amount of the electricity that was produced at a predetermined price.
Just one more question.
Yes, sir.
On the generation of the electric, with energy, I know there's going to be an excess there as far as the tiebreaker goes, do they consume that at no cost?
Great question. So Alderman, the way this works, you should think of it as kind of almost like a bank account, where the generation from the solar power plant is making deposits, if you will, into an account. And then when the, when the governmental entities are drawing electricity from Entergy, that's the equivalent of a debit from that account, okay? So make a real simple example, let's say in a given month, the solar power plant produces 100,000 kilowatt-hours of electricity. And the consumption by the city, and the water utility, and the county, instead of being 100,000, it's only 90,000 kilowatt. So that 10,000 kilowatt-hour difference carries forward into the next month. So you get, you keep that credit, and the way we've sized the plant, the consumption of the governmental entities and the production of the solar power plant on average is going to balance out. So we've sized the plant, so that it'll, on average, produce enough electricity to supply your average consumption. So net-net, you'll be getting charged zero kilowatt-hours from Entergy. There's still some customer service charges, there's still some demand charges and so forth. But that's the way we've sized this, so that the vast majority of your electricity bill from Entergy Arkansas goes away, and what you're substituting is a lower payment that you're making for the solar power, and it's the difference between them that provides the savings.
So, so energy will be storing the energy and distributing the energy?
Yeah, I just disagree with just one thing, they don't store it, it's immediately used. So it's going on to the grid, and it just goes to some other customer, some other Entergy customer.
Right, and energy controlled the grid?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's Entergy's grid.
It's their grid.
It's their grid, yes, sir, you bet. And this all occurs, by the way, under Arkansas law, it all occurs under Arkansas statute. It's called the net metering statute, and, you know, it's, it's a very well-tried path. This has been done many times.
My current understanding of the net metering law is, it is strictly a credit. So if for some reason, at the end of the year, let's say the city, the solar array produces more energy, then the city ends up consuming, maybe it's a small amount, maybe it's a sizable one. The way, my understanding is, what would happen at that point, if, you know, we get to the end of the year, and it doesn't balance out, we actually have to produce more?
You carry the credit forward to the next year.
Okay, until, assuming of course, one day it's cloudy for a month straight, and we end up using all our...
There you go, exactly.
Not, that's the best you can offer, but we'll take it.
I do want to recognize the presence of Judge McAdoo, who has brought his team from Court to come and hear the presentation. As you've noticed, they're also a part of this operation. And if you don't mind my breaking protocol, are you satisfied with the questions that we've asked Judge McAdoo?
Yes, just a little tweaking, I want to do the negotiation before we sign the...
All right.
You know, but this is a good plan. You know, but this is a good plan. I am, I am in favor of this plan. Still working with Senecille Solar to whether we purchase land and they build it on it, or whether they purchase land and we give a tax credit. And trying to work to lock in the best price possible that will benefit the city and the county. And I do feel confident that Senecille is a company that we can, we can negotiate honestly with, and so.
Thank you. And with an agreement of 30 years, that's, it's going to be very important that we're all pretty happy. However, tonight, we are here to make a decision on an intent, not a contract.
Yes, sir.
And the, the letter of intent gives you an opportunity to go back with more information and negotiate and bring us the best deal for our city and our county as well as for our water.
Exactly right. And, and let me say this.
When you bring the best, that means we're going to have to have it. You're going to bring us the absolute best. Deal the first time, so we don't have to spend a lot of time.
And I'd say this to Mayor, I'd say this, and also to Judge McAdoo, I mean, both of you know that I've got great respect for both of you and look forward to that negotiation as we fine-tune this. Because there is some fine-tuning, as the judge mentioned, right? There are things that the city and the county and the water utility can do to make it easier to do and therefore more cost-effective. There are some things that Senecille can do, and, and we're delighted to do them. And in fact, we operate, I will tell you, differently than most folks. We've signed contracts with customers, and subsequently, when we've discovered additional savings, we've gone back and amended the contract to provide some of those savings on to that same customer, even after a contract was signed. So we do look forward to working with you and fine-tuning this, because there is a lot of fine-tuning. I'd also say that until we go forward to the Arkansas Public Service Commission with a specific plan that we wish to execute, you know, we don't know exactly what power plant you're actually going to have. We've got to go get that approved. So there's a, it's a, it's a process in which we're going to be working together closely for weeks, very intensively, and then we go to the Public Service Commission, get the approval, and then, then we're ready to build a power plant.
Thank you. Out of curiosity, where is part of the Yankers located?
So we've got multiple sites. We did show one next to the county jail, is basically what, what we've identified there. But there are other possibilities, sir. This is part of the fine-tuning.
Yes, sir.
That was the question. I was wondering if you were going to be privy to where this location's at beforehand?
Yeah, the location's got grown there, it's not, not large enough as is to accomplish what we need to accomplish with this solar field. We have, we have talked about contiguous versus non-contiguous land. We're still looking at that part, Alderman Moore, but.
And I'm just assuming that because of the, the area he's talking about, it's going to be in the county?
No, it's, it's, that property he's talking about there is in the city.
Right, but I'm, I'm thinking the area he's talking about, he's going to need some county views, because he's talking about quite a good area.
Yeah, so we're, we're looking at, for this, you know, round numbers, folks, we're looking at about 25 to 30 acres of land is what we're going to need. As the judge just pointed out, it doesn't necessarily have to be all in one location. The key thing we have to have is we've got to have good interconnection to Entergy's distribution system. That is the key. But there's a, there's a lot of work on the front end that goes into these selections. There's a, there's a back and forth with the electric utility, and you do that as you're going to the Public Service Commission. Very difficult on the front end to say this is what we're going to do without doing the engineering evaluations and stuff. As long as this is the plan. Yes, sir.
I assume that should the need arise at some time in that 30-year contract, if they're damaged, say due to storm activity, you'll come in and repair them?
Yes, sir. That's, thank you for that question. So just to be clear, Senic, in this arrangement that we're talking about, Senecille would be fully responsible for all operating costs, all maintenance, everything. The, we're on the hook for all of it, from soup to nuts, no, no dollars out by any of the governmental entities on the front end. It's really the land that we're talking about. But the operation expense, that's all on us for the whole period.
One question. Thompson, please.
No, sir, these are, no, sir. It's just not an issue with solar panels. It's not, there's no materials there that are possible.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hawke.
Thank you.
Now this time, we're going to move to, is there any more questions?
Okay.
At this time, we'll move to a report by James Lee Sillman for the OPEAD service contract.
Mayor and Alderman, it's a pleasure to be with you tonight. You will be voting later on in the evening, assume on Resolution Number 1419, which is our annual contract, provide economic development services for the city of Camden, Arkansas. And I have provided the mayor an advanced copy of the contract for services for economic development services. This is the standard contract that we've been operating under ever since I've been the director of OPEAD for approximately three and a half years now with, with the city of Camden. So with that, Mayor, did you want me to make any other comments? I'll, I know you're, the council will vote on the resolution if we introduce later, so.
Well, I do want to review the contract. There was a particular line, of course, that we've already discussed, and it will, yours is, since Resolution 14.
1419.
Okay, Resolution 1419, okay. And the, and the reason is because I do want to, the city is, is going to be giving $150,000 again, am I correct? And I would like to know the percentage of business in Camden as a result of our OPEAD And I believe that we could, that we could know what incentives, what the percentage of incentives or some kind of numbers that would validate the 150 that we'll be giving again, and to make sure that Camden is on the top of the list as far as, you know, it's at, near the top of the list for these incentives that are being given at $150,000.
Okay.
I don't know, I don't know how to state it. It's just important to me that the incentivization is bringing more to Camden. And I understand that you, yours includes Highland Industrial Park and some more, but I would love to see a lot more inside the city limits. We just made a commitment to our police officers and to our, to our police officers, our fire department, got to get that revenue inside the city limits. And this is not against Calhoun County, it's pro-Washitaught and City of Camden.
I understand.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
We have a question.
Yes, sir.
I've been on this board a while, and, and, you know, I've had my differences with OPEAD. But I, and it's, it's, it's kind of funny, because I was reading an article about this solar market here recently. And I was looking back at one of the OPEAD's contracts, and is there any particular reason why we don't look at the investment as far as looking at? I know you all invest in, let's say, the businesses or the industry in a sense. We're talking about, and when we say industry, we're talking about East Camden in a sense. What about the retail industry? The industry here in the city? Is, why haven't that been looked at as trying to advance what we invest in here in this city? I mean, you got your retail industry, you, you got different businesses other than, and I'm all for building bonds, I have no problem with that. But I'm just saying, what about the other industries here in Camden that we can invest in that create jobs? And it's right here in this city.
Alderman Moore, I do entertain retail prospects on a fairly regular basis, and retail, most of our retail locations are located in the city of Camden.
Yes.
I think Mr. Lindsay will tell you that I have brought prospects to him. I don't discriminate, I show them all opportunities, be it downtown, shopping centers, wherever. So that is an aspect of my job, in addition to supporting our existing industrial base, which is primarily Calhoun County, and that's written in the contract and has always been. We, we do entertain retail prospects, but prior to my arrival and taking the reins at OPEAD, and I will remind this counsel and the mayor, that when I was, was hired to do the job of executive director of Washitaught Partnership of Economic Development, and it is a partnership, we call ourselves Team Camden, but that team involves everybody seated at this table, the county government, Chamber of Commerce, Camden Area Industrial Development Corporation, state of Arkansas. But prior to my arrival as executive director of OPEAD, the retail incentive portion was of the contract. We used to be able to offer retail incentives through OPEAD, through our Economic Development Board. We have a diverse Economic Development Board. It's designed, we've got business leaders, we've got the mayor's representative, we have a city council representative, county judges, this on our board, Chamber of Commerce, CAIDC. It's designed to be non-political to take the politics out of our decision. But prior to my arrival, the retail incentive portion of OPEAD being able to offer retail incentives was removed from our wheelhouse or my tool belt. And we, although I, we, we continue to host and recruit and, and show prospects, retail prospects, the final say on offering retail incentives to a retail prospect was brought back into your wheelhouse.
And what it reads, if you don't mind, it says, "All incentives requested for the retail professional development shall be presented to and approved by the Camden City Council." And what that does for me is it limits our ability to go to the negotiating table and to be able to talk about incentives to a, to, let's just say we have a, let's just say we have a building that's usually, that could be used for retail. We can negotiate with East Camden, but can't negotiate in our own city limits to be able to entice people to do business inside Camden with a building that's already built. It ties our hands. I need, Eagle Development needs the ability to be able to sit at the table and make decisions without waiting a month to come back to another meeting.
And if I may, just my input.